Good evening. Let's call to order the March 9, 2009 Planning Commission meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Reynolds? Thanks, Commissioner Reynolds. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Adam?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Grumney?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Chair Lund? Here. Okay, now's the time for public comments. We don't have a public comment card here. That's for the public to address the commission on items in our purview and not on the agenda. So we'll move directly to item number five, Written Comments, Announcements, and Continuances. Mr. Town.
Thank you, Chair Lund. We do not have a supplemental packet for this evening's Planning Commission meeting, however, we do have a memorandum from Mr. Mark Sellers representing the applicant with reference to condition number 56. And I assume that all of the commissioners have that. That was just passed out. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Will Secretary please call case 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6A regarding case SUP 2008-70341. Applicant Belmont Village LP, request to allow construction of a 131-unit assisted living facility. Location, east side of Moore Park Road, approximately 800 feet north of Olson Road.
Good evening, Mr. Rankie. You have the staff report this evening.
Chair Lund and members of the commission, the applicant's request to construct a 131-unit assisted living facility, and it's located on Moore Park Road, north of Olson, on the north side of the city. And here's an aerial view of the site. And to the northeast, there's an existing residential neighborhood. It's been there for approximately 40 years plus. To the west of the project is the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. And then on the south side of the church is the Castle Hill Retirement Village. And then over on the east side is a single-family residence. And here's a photo view of the project on Moore Park Road looking southeast. And a view from the church from the center of the site. And a view from the church, south driveway looking northeast. The property's owned PL. That's a public, quasi-public, and institutional lands and facility zone. In 1986, the city council approved a 180-bed skilled nursing facility on the site, but the project expired. In 2002, the Planning Commission approved a 75-bed Alzheimer's facility, but that project was not built. The site consists of 5.08 acres. Portions of the site have been previously rough graded. The proposal would accommodate 131 beds, including Alzheimer's facility. The building is approximately 105,000 square feet in size. The grading concept involves lowering the south portion of the site about 10 feet to allow a stepped building design. The existing pad on the north side will remain as is. There's a subterranean parking garage under the northern portion of the building. The facility has three outdoor areas. There's a swimming pool in the front of the building, courtyard for residents with Alzheimer's disease also in front of the building, and there's a patio of the dining room at the rear of the building. There are 33 parking spaces required. There are 66 parking spaces provided. Forty-nine spaces are underground in the parking garage. And the parking garage is for residents and employees. And then there's 17 surface spaces in the front of the building, and they're for visitors. Here's a site plan of the project. And the main driveway access is located across the street from the north driveway of the church across the street. And then it comes into a portico share on the main entry. And the parking garage is located on the north side of the building. And the entry is in front here. And the Alzheimer's courtyard is located on the north side in front of the building. And swimming pool area on the south side of the building in the front. And then the patio is in the rear right here. The building is three stories in height, although it has a step design to give a two-story appearance at the north and south ends. The average height is 34 feet, which is allowed in the PL zone. The maximum height is 46 feet in the center of the building. And that's due to the 10-foot grade change. And then there's a tower element in the middle of the building, and that's 56 feet high. The architecture's contemporary enough training with a tower near the center of the building. It has a step, the building has a step design, and staggered walls facing the street. A portico share at the main entry has plaster facades and sloping roof elements in the front of the building. The building includes a great room, dining area, library, beauty salon, kitchen, and a bistro. Those are for the residents. The building coverage is 21 percent, and it's under the 25 percent maximum allowed in the PL zone. And here's a view of the front elevation. And a view of the north and south elevations. And here's a proposed view looking northeast from Moore Park Road, from the south driveway entrance to the church across the street. And then we have a view looking southeast from Greenridge Street. And this is a cross-section of the building. The south portion of the building has been designed so that it's 66 feet below the building pad of the residence to the east. And on that south wing of the building, the building is 31 feet below the building pad of that residence. And the north wing, it's 21 feet below. The tower element is nine feet below the building pad. So the building was designed so that it didn't block any views from the adjacent property to the east. The environmental review, the mitigated negative declaration number 267, was prepared for the project. And through incorporation of mitigation measures identified in the MND, the potential effects can be reduced to an insignificant level. And the applicant has agreed to the mitigation measures as required by CEQA. And staff recommends approval of the MND number 267, the mitigation monitoring plan, and the reporting program, and SUP 2008-70341, based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. And staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rankie. Questions to staff? Commissioner Adam?
All right, thank you. Yeah, I just have a couple for Mr. Rankie, and I have one for Ms. Baden as well. Just a couple of clarifications on some numbers in the report. Mr. Rankie, oh, by the way, I was at the property this afternoon, and I went up to Mr. Severance's house and talked with Mr. Severance briefly, and got a look at the project from his front yard. Okay, anyway, just wanted to, discrepancies or clarification I'd like to get, is the staff report says that the building is 66 feet below Mr. Severance's property, and he says in a letter it's 50.
Well, right now, it's, from his building pad, it's existing, it's 55 feet. But that portion of the building, the south wing of the building, will be lowered 10 feet. So his elevation is, of his house is 915, and he actually has a raised foundation, which raises it up a few feet more. And the pad will be lowered down to an elevation of 849 feet. So 10 feet lower, so that's a 66-foot difference.
Okay. So it's 66 feet from the southern portion of the building, then?
Yes. The northern portion will, the first floor will remain pretty much at the same elevation as it is now. And the north wing will be 21 feet below his pad elevation.
Okay. And it's the southern portion of the building that's more adjacent to his home, is it?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I understand that. Just one other clarification for me, please. It has to do with the viewing height and the slope. The city says that Mr. Severance's house is at 915 feet, and he maintains it's 924. And the city says that his house is 100 feet from the edge of the slope, and he says it's 80.
The slope, the slope kind of varies, the top of the slope. The key thing here is the separation between his house and the new building, it's like almost 250 feet. And so the top of the slope is on his property, so it kind of does vary, but that shouldn't really make a difference, because we take viewshade and impactments into consideration from the graded pad that the house is at, or the, and then to the top of the house, not really looking down at the house.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Severance will probably want to address that issue as well. And then just a couple of quick things on the, some of the design features. The east side windows, the possibility of tinted glass there, has that been discussed, or has the applicant agreed? Of course, I could ask the applicant.
That was discussed with the applicant, and the applicant's concern would be that the rooms would be too dark inside, and that at all of their other facilities, they go with the normal standard, standard glass.
Okay.
And since the, since the residents of the facilities, their windows are actually below his house, so when he looks out from his house, he won't be, you know, looking directly into their windows. And there'll also be landscaping that will be installed, trees on the rear slope of the facility that will, you know, help soften the building if Mr. Severance is out on the edge of his pad away from his house.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Severance also suggests that, you know, as far as all the excavation does, that we'd be doing, and the exportation of the dirt, somehow that if the dirt was exported to his property, that could help his privacy situation. How would that be?
I think maybe he was considering constructing some berms or whatever. In order to export more than 50 cubic yards, it requires a grading permit. But in order to have a grading permit approved, he would need to have an entitlement. And entitlement is, would be for some building or structure, because the city doesn't allow earth to be moved on to other properties where it's greater than 50 cubic yards without an entitlement permit.
All right, I see. So he'd need some sort of a permit for that to happen, then? Okay. And, let's see. Oh, as far as the tower goes, has there been any discussion about the height of the tower?
There was quite a bit of discussion regarding the tower height. And the applicant, they did look at designs that would lower the height, but they indicated that the tower would lose a lot of its character if it was lowered.
Oh, and there's one part of the report where Mr. Severance mentions there's a placement of a curb gutter, sidewalk, parkway, new concrete driveway that might, would be on his property. That's not going to happen, is it?
No, it's in the public right-of-way, but it's right in front of his driveway entry portion of his property on the corner of Moore Park and Olson. But it'll all be within the public right-of-way.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Rankie. And if I may, just a quick question from Ms. Baden. On the Moore Park Road, and so we are going to, there is proposed that we widen that road?
Yes, there's a plan to improve this portion of Moore Park Road.
By six feet, was it?
Actually, the proposed improvements would allow us to restripe the road, to add a two-way left turn lane for access into the project, and driveways and streets on the west side of Moore Park, as well as letting us install bike lane and sidewalk on both sides of the street. So we consider it an improvement to this section of Moore Park Road.
But it's nothing that the project itself would require. This is just, over, in your opinion, overall improvements to the road itself, then, right?
What's typical when a property develops, that the frontage improvements go in with the development. And what we're trying to do is take the opportunity to extend the sidewalk from the project down to the corner of Moore Park at Olson, where there's existing sidewalk, and also to add sidewalk on the west side of the street and bike lanes through the section. And the improvements that are proposed are looking at a little bit different road alignment, so that it'll be a better accommodation for the traffic volumes that we have existing, and accommodate the proposed project traffic as well.
Well, the reason I bring it up, there was a concern from a couple of the residents that as the road was widened, it would get closer to their backyard block walls, number one. And then number two, one of the residents requested that the guardrail that's there now be extended as a safety precaution.
Right. You asked a couple of things, so if I could take them a piece at a time.
Sure.
All of these improvements are going to be within the existing right-of-way. So the city owns quite a bit of extra property on the west side of Moore Park that's not improved yet. So the proposed widening is also on a curve, and the project's on the inside of the curve. So for us to approve a driveway that would have adequate site distance for the speeds on Moore Park Road, we need to be able to see a considerable distance to the north and to the south of the driveway. So if we move the paved section of the road a little bit to the west, we actually improve the site distance at the driveway, and make it safer for people to come in and out of the project, as well as turning onto Greenridge. So this design gets a little bit complicated, because they're talking about the alignment of the curve, they're talking about two-way left turn lane to get access to the various driveways on the street. And they're also talking about some superelevation to help with the curve that's on Moore Park Road. And because of that superelevation, it does raise the west side of the street a bit, so that, and maybe Mr. Rankie can jump in here. We were talking with the neighbors about the privacy wall at the back of the existing homes on that, back up to Moore Park Road, and just making sure that the design will maintain the privacy wall and separation between the road and the back of the properties. It's most likely that guardrail would extend through this whole section, because as you introduce superelevation and you raise that side of the road, it's probably going to extend through the whole area. But that wouldn't be known exactly until the design is complete by the civil engineers. And we're also going to be adding a sidewalk between the proposed edge of the pavement on the west side and the back of the homes, that, back up to Moore Park Road. So that's another improvement that, when I am out in this area, I see a lot of people walking, and it's unimproved right now. So this would allow them to have a finished sidewalk, and better drainage, and basically clean up this area that's been unimproved for many, many years.
Okay, I see. Well, yeah, walking is good. That's good. So it sounds like it's going to be, because the residents were concerned about that curve, and people not being able to make it, and hammering their cars into, you know, their walls, et cetera. But from what you're telling me, then you anticipate a guardrail to extend pretty much the length of that curve, then?
Yes, it should, it will be reviewed by the civil engineers, and where it's appropriate to put it in, it'll be installed with the improvements. It most likely will go in the whole section between the church property and Greenridge. But it has to be designed to meet city, state, federal guidelines. So until that process is done, it's not known exactly where it's going to be located, but it'll probably be the full length. We're also going to be adding bike lanes and sidewalk in this area, so that really will be a plus.
Okay. Yeah, that's good to hear. Are we going to go into the church property at all, as far as widening the road? Well, that, well, I guess it's, we have right-of-way there, so it's not their property, per se.
Right. The improvements will end at the northerly driveway for the church, so the back driveway. And we really consider this an improvement to the road, because changing the curve is really going to be a plus in this area.
All right. I just wanted that to come forth, because of the concerns that I read about. And also, one of the other concerns I read about was, would the residents be able to raise their wall height? And I think with the new ordinance that was passed relatively recently, that they do have the ability to raise it as far, up to nine feet, as a matter of fact, without any fees or charges from the city. So whether they would or not, I'd certainly be up to them. But, all right. Well, thanks, Ms. Baden.
Did that conclude your questions? Thank you, sir. Commissioner Reynolds. And don't worry, we'll get to this side of the dais here in just a second.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Rankie. To follow up on the trees being planted on the hillside, whose responsibility will it be to maintain the trees?
The trees that are planted on the Belmont Village property would be maintained by them.
Okay. Would there be anything so that, a covenant or something, so that these trees would never block the view of the Severance home?
We were actually going to take that in consideration when reviewing. We were actually going to take that in consideration when reviewing the landscape plan to get the taller growing trees more towards the bottom of the slope and the smaller one, growing ones towards the top so that, so that at their ultimate design height, they won't, you know, block his view.
Okay. Because I know they want it for privacy, but yet you don't want it to completely block the view from their property.
But we did indicate to the resident to the east that we would work with them during the review of the final landscape plan to make sure that the trees are adjusted right.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is, you know, I always talk about this, it talks about the grading and the truck trips, 2,137. And that's really just out. So there's going to be, what, a total of 4,274 trips? And do you have any idea what, I know that they will let you know the route, but do you have any idea what the route will be for these incoming and outgoing totaling 4,000?
I wouldn't have that answer. Would you have that answer? Yeah.
Okay, then I'll ask during the...
If I could jump in for a second. The haul route would be approved as part of the grading plan, and there will be quite a bit of export from the site. It's most likely that the haul route would be southbound on Moore Park Road, out to Olson Road, and then depending on where the export is going, it would either go north or south on Olson Road. There's, we wouldn't permit that amount of truck traffic to go down the Norwegian grade, and we certainly wouldn't let it go through the neighborhood. There are a couple of conditions in the packet about the haul route, and also that there wouldn't be any staging on Moore Park Road, Olson Road, or within the neighborhood.
Okay. That answers my question. I was concerned about the Norwegian grade and the whole thing, the staging. So, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Commissioner Grumman.
Good evening, Mr. Rankie. Would you know, back in 1986, when it was the 180-room approval facility, how many square feet that was?
I believe it was in the, in the low 60,000 square feet.
Okay. And I was noticing in the packet, the letter from Mr. Severance, where he attached a letter that he had received from the city of Thousand Oaks that was written by senior planner Lori Young. And it has in there, she had quoted that a major consideration in design was to limit the height to two stories. I was curious what considerations or changes occurred from the city's position to change it or to allow it to go from a two-story to a three-story?
During the, after the approval of the second project that was approved at the site in 2001, that applicant came back and they wanted to make some further revisions of adding an additional story. She had looked at different design concepts, and it was at that point where she informed them that a three-story would be inappropriate. And the reason for that was that they were planning on doing that on the existing pad, especially the pad to the south. So it would have, that building with the three-story would have sat up 10 foot higher, about 10 feet higher than this building height. So the building height on the whole, south of this building, pretty much maintains, it's close to the height of the building that was approved in the late 1980s. So it's not any, doesn't go any higher than that. And also, this building was designed so that there's only, around approximately two-thirds of the frontage of the building on the north and south wings, at the front, there's only two stories. And the three stories are in the rear against the hillside, the slope. And so the applicant also added some single-story elements to give the building at both ends a two-story appearance, and it only really has a three-story appearance in the front as where it steps down 10 feet.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher.
Yes, Mr. Rankie, do you know offhand the Castle Hill development down the street? How many stories is that?
The main building in the center of the property, it has a large portion of it is three stories. And then it's also higher than 35 feet.
Second question, this has to do with the 56-foot-high tower. Does that serve a purpose or is it strictly for looks?
It was strictly aesthetics.
Last question, probably for the city attorney, for Mr. Sellers' memo that we received tonight regarding condition 56. Do you agree with that?
Well, I disagree for a couple of reasons, and I was actually going to have Mark Town explain to you, and then I will follow up if need be. So, Mark, do you want to go ahead?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sure. With regard to condition 56, it has to do with the non-residential linkage fee program, which was adopted by the city council last year in approximately June, July, after about five years of study. And the purpose of it is to raise funds for affordable housing projects by imposing a fee on certain commercial and related projects that exceed a certain square footage of 7,500 square feet. There are five use categories that are identified in this ordinance, and what we have before us this evening is really a proposal to modify or to propose another use category. It's my interpretation of the code based on the city council's adoption, both of the text and of the fee schedule, that this is a matter that the council would need to review if it is proposed to them. The planning commission does not have the ability to modify that language nor modify those fees at this time. There are several options that are available, though, for the applicant. There is a waiver provision that is provided in the non-residential linkage fee program. That could be followed, depending on the outcome of tonight's hearing. If this case is appealed at the city council, that's another option that could be looked at in conjunction with the application before the commission tonight. And then finally, the council does intend to look at the issue of fee rates related to both the inclusionary program and also the non-residential linkage fee program in the near future. And I should note that the way that the language is written in the code for this program is that the fees that are in effect are those at a time of building permit request. So if rates change and the building permits are pulled down the road, then those would be the applicable fees at that time. So there are several options, in my opinion, available to the applicant, but modifying the language of the program at this point is not one of them.
I'd just like to thank you, members of the commission and members of the public, that I agree with Mark Town's statements, and we view this, the fact that it was the planning, I'm sorry, the community development director has designated this as lodging, and that that is not appealable to the planning commission, that is something that would have to be appealed to the city council and that they have the final word. So this was put in here as a way for us, eyes viewed as sort of housekeeping as the project moves along, but the reality is, is the ordinance stands on its own, and it would be enforced at the time that building permits are pulled. This just makes it clear for the applicant that that's how it works. So there is not, respectfully to Mr. Sellers' position and that of his clients, that this is not an appropriate issue to be dealt with here tonight.
Any questions of Ms. Albano or Mr. Town?
No, thank you.
Okay. I had just one final question for staff to follow up on a question from Commissioner Fisher. On the building height, there's an indication that the tower element facing Moore Park Road is 56 feet. Is that measured from the ground or from the garage, or what's the metric for that?
That would be measured from the ground right in front of the building.
Okay, thank you. All right. We're going to go to the speakers now. Mr. Lazard will be our first speaker, speaking for the applicant. You have 15 minutes. Please, if you'd be so kind, is to give us your name and your city of residence. You have 15 minutes, and the yellow light indicates when you have a minute left.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Doug Lazard. I am a resident of Santa Clarita, California. I'm an employee of Belmont Village Senior Living. I'm a senior vice president. Want to introduce the rest of my team. Stephen Broyer is actually going to be operating the PowerPoint presentation here. He's also an employee of Belmont Village, a senior vice president of development. We have also with us Mark Sellers, who is our land use attorney, Dennis Diavazi, who's our architect, Bob Bamadyer, Lee Newman, who are our landscape architects, and also we have our civil engineer here as well as Jeff Marsh. I'll first tell you a little bit about Belmont Village. Our services also define what assisted living is, and tell you a little bit about our outreach efforts and how our project design has changed since we filed our original application back in May of 2007. Belmont Village is a fully integrated owner, developer, and operator of assisted living communities across the nation. We've been around for 12 years. Our first community was opened in Houston, Texas, about 11 years ago. We now have 19 communities across the country, and we take care of approximately 2,500 seniors across the country. We just opened a new community here in California, North San Diego County in Cardiff by the Sea last month, and we have a community that's still under construction in Westwood, California that's right near UCLA. We are an experienced collaborator. A couple of examples are with UCLA and the NFL. We were selected by UCLA to design and build a retirement community near the campus for their retired professors and also alumni of UCLA. We also were selected by the NFL to be a preferred provider for assisted living services for their older players. The NFL has established a foundation, and they actually will help fund the older players who didn't make as much money as the current players, help fund their assisted living costs. A little bit about our product sector overview. Most people understand what independent living is and also what nursing homes are, which are the two opposite ends. Independent living is more of what you find in senior apartments, age-restricted developments, active senior communities. The other end, nursing homes, are for very frail, very sick seniors. It's more of the medical model. It's reimbursed by, or it's covered by Medicare, Medicaid. Assisted living falls right in the middle. We are licensed by the state, just like in a nursing home, it's a different type of license. We, you know, our seniors are, they're healthier than a nursing home, but they're more frail than you'll find in independent living. We provide personal care services. We also will take care of seniors that have Alzheimer's or memory impairment. Average age of our resident is 85 years old. We, at Belmont Village, were a for-rent model as opposed to a purchase model. There's examples, there's actually a community in Thousand Oaks that is, provides the full continuum of care, University Village, which is nearby. They will take care of all three, independent living, assisted, and nursing home, but they're still primarily independent living. About 85, 90% of their units are for independent living, and they're an equity buy-in model as opposed to a for-rent model. Little bit more about our assisted living services. We provide three meals a day, seven days a week for our seniors. We give our seniors a lot of choices. Our meals are served restaurant-style. We have distinct waitstaff. We'll have for lunch and dinner. There's about 25 items on the menu that are available every day. There's social and learning activities going on all the time at the community. We have scheduled transportation seven days a week. Our residents don't drive, and therefore they don't, they have very, they don't generate traffic to the surrounding area. We have 24-hour care staff to provide our residents with assistance with bathing, dressing, grooming. We will escort residents to meals and activities. If they rely on a wheelchair, we'll push the wheelchair for them. We also have nursing staff around the clock. We have a registered nurse that's part of our management team, full-time. We also have LVNs, licensed vocational nurses, on-site 24 hours a day. We use LVNs to dispense medications, even though it's not required by the state. It's just a standard that Belmont has had from the very beginning. And also, the nurses will supervise the staff and supervise resident care. We have exercise programs that are supervised by a physical therapist that's on-site for part of the day in our fitness facility. And then for Alzheimer's and dementia care, we will have a separate and secured area in the community for 26 units for residents that have Alzheimer's. We'll have twice as much care staff dedicated to that area. They will have their own dining room, their own separate outdoor space and activity space. And then we have a very unique program called our Circle of Friends program, and it's for residents that are in the assisted living area that have mild cognitive impairment, very early stages of dementia. They still live in assisted living, but we have the programming to help to support them throughout their day. Little bit about our building designs. The photo that you see here is our new property in Cardiff by the Sea that just opened a month ago. Our buildings are all concrete or steel. They're non-combustible buildings, fully sprinkled. Our buildings are set up with emergency call systems in the resident rooms, as well as a wireless device if a resident is in a wheelchair and can't get to the pole cord. We also have smoke detectors in the rooms and throughout the building, and an emergency generator for backup power on-site. We, just recently, when Hurricane Rita came through Houston, our community there worked off of the emergency generator for seven days, a full week. And we never missed a meal, and our residents didn't have to relocate. Engaging common areas for the residents, actually about 40% of the square footage of the building will be dedicated to common space. We have a great room as soon as you walk into the facility, place for our residents to socialize, where we have entertainment throughout the week. We have parlor areas throughout the building, a dining room, bar bistro where we'll have cappuccino, snacks and beverages available, fitness facility, an outdoor pool, computer room, and activity space throughout the community. Our units will consist of several different options for studio and several different-sized one-bedroom apartments. They'll range in size from 350 for the smallest studio, 350 square feet for the smallest studio, to 900 square feet for the largest unit. All of the units will be set up with kitchenettes as opposed to full kitchen. They'll have a refrigerator, a microwave, a bar sink, and some cabinetry. We are licensed by the Department of Social Services, state of California, as a residential care facility for the elderly. Because of the type of construction, we're steel construction as opposed to wood frame, the entire building will, our license will allow us to have non-ambulatory residents in the entire building. We won't be limited. And that's important because a large percentage of our residents will rely on canes, walkers, wheelchairs, or they need somebody to help them get around. And under state licensure, they'll define somebody as being non-ambulatory if they use a cane or if they have any sort of memory impairment. Staffing, all of our staff will go through extensive criminal background checks, including fingerprint checks. We do extensive training on-site. Our shifts are staggered so that our staff come and go at non-peak traffic hours. Care staff will come at 6:30 in the morning, change a shift at 2:30 in the afternoon, and then again at 10:30 at night. So our staff coming and going will not impact... So, our staff coming and going will not impact peak traffic at all. And also, many of our staff will rely on public transportation. A little bit about community outreach. We had several meetings with neighbors. We met several times with Mr. Severance, who lives on the east side of our property, to discuss the points that he addressed in his various letters. We gave a presentation to the leadership of the church across the street. They welcomed our use in the neighborhood. We had several presentations to homeowners groups in nearby areas. Again, very supportive of our project, very supportive of seeing the site cleaned up. And then, we had a neighborhood meeting with the neighborhood across the street. Like the use, main concern there that came out was they, a few of the residents that are along the back up to the street wanted to be sure that there was a guardrail to protect their block walls. Project changes that we've incorporated into our design from our original application in May of 2007, we've been working on this quite a while, based upon city staff input as well as citizen input. You know, we changed the design of the building as far as how it appeared from the street. Building height, we're staying within the 35 feet that is allowed, but we're very sensitive to distances that our residents have to walk to the dining room, where they have to come three times a day, and to common space. So, moving around the building vertically is much easier for a senior than a very, very long or spread-out two-story building. We've studied this. The nice thing about developing our own properties is that we know from experience what works, and there are set differences, distances that we know that our residents can tolerate. And we also like to encourage our residents to be as independent as possible and maintain their independence as long, as long as possible. So, rather than push somebody in a wheelchair, if they're able to walk with a walker, we'll have staff that will walk next to them to meals and activities. So, we changed the design so that from the, from the street, it appears mostly as a two-story building. It is a three-story building in the center core and along the back of the property. We lowered the pad by 10 feet. We also came up with what we think is a very clever design where it's kind of a split design, where the southern half of the building is lowered, and underneath, at the ground level, on the north half is our underground parking garage. Couple of the changes that we've made, we did relocate the driveway to the center of the site. Originally, it was on the north. It was felt it was safer to be more in the center. We relocated several things that were to be located in the rear of the property. The trash enclosure, delivery entrance, the designated employee smoking area was all pulled away from the back of the building, and it's actually now in an enclosed area that's between our main entrance in the center and the parking garage entrance. We significantly reduced the size of the patio that's in the rear of the property, and it is the only outdoor space that we have in the back of the property. It's a small terrace that's just right off of our dining room. And then, we enhanced the hillside landscaping. One of the conditions was to use some California pepper trees. That was at the request of our neighbor to the east because it was felt that they would grow faster and provide more of a, of a buffer between, you know, his, his property and our property, and basically soften the view as you're looking down from the hill onto our site. That's about all I have for my presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Mark Sellers for the remainder of my time, and then I'm available to answer any questions.
Good evening, Mr. Sellers.
Good evening. This fee obviously is new to myself. It's new to the commission. I'm sure it's new to the city. I was looking at Section 910-604, subsection B, which says, "Any request for a waiver, adjustment, or reduction of the fee under this section shall be filed with an application for non-residential development." So, that's why I'm here tonight, because I assume that since you're approving the non-residential development, that you would have the power to make some decision on this fee. But staff seems to indicate that's solely a city council decision, which, if that's the matter, I'm here just to preserve the record, to let the commission know that this is a very substantial fee. This fee was unknown at the time we filed the application. We went hard on the deal, which meant that, in essence, that we lost any refundability of deposits. Then, the day after the application was deemed complete, we got a notice from the city that there's a $256,000 fee. So, with that, I will basically just make these points with the city council, if that's the only option we have.
Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Reynolds?
I have a question, Mr. Lazard. Good evening. I wanted to talk to you about, you said you have a secure area for the Alzheimer's patients, but the other patients with early stages will be in the, in the regular, the housing units there. What is security will you take so that they don't wander out? I have to tell you, I have a background in working in COVID-19 hospitals, and it was always my job, because I was one of the few nurses with a car, that I'd have to go out and find these people. And I know nowadays, a police department is called to go out often and find people.
Right. I'll answer that in two parts. We do regular assessments of our residents. That's the reason we have, we're big on nurses. That's the reason we have an RN on staff. So, every three months, we will assess our residents, and we know our residents. I actually had the benefit of running one of our communities for a couple of years. You know who, when it's becoming time to transition a resident to a secure area. So, you know, if a resident is a wander risk, they need to be in the secure area. If they're having difficulty finding their room in the assisted living area, that's a big indication that you need to start transitioning because you don't want to run the risk of somebody eloping and getting lost and being disoriented. So, for residents that are in the secure areas, because they need to be. For residents that are in our Circle of Friends for mild cognitive impairment, that's reserved for residents that are just a little bit confused. They're not wander risks, okay? And it's for the very, very early stages. And what we're trying to do there, and we're finding a lot of success, is that with the appropriate amount of mental stimulation through activities, through, you know, classroom-type of activities, interaction with other residents, that we can maintain them at that level as long as possible. Because what I found when I was running a property is that when somebody progressed from needing, you know, needing to go into the security, there was a pretty rapid decline in their capacity, okay? But by providing the stimulation, we found that we stopped that. So, we do regular assessments, and, you know, we ensure that our residents are safe.
Well, my main concern was because when they wander out, they're not just wandering on a residential street, they're wandering out to a very busy street. And that was why I was concerned about that. And I did want to say that I really am pleased to see the additional parking because no matter what, even though you say that none of the residents will be driving and using those, and that they're for staff and visitors, there's always a need for the additional parking because of the visitors they have, or we hope that they will have as visitors. Thank you.
Any further questions to the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Lazard. We'll, we'll call you back up. Next speaker is Stephen Severance, followed by Gloria Castro-Severance, followed by Mr. Frank Shabel. Mr. Severance? Good evening, sir. You have five minutes. Please state your name and city of residence for us.
Thank you very much. Good evening, chair, commission members, and staff. Steve Severance, city of residence, Thousand Oaks, 35 years. I have a short PowerPoint presentation. I'm here tonight to talk about NMD 267, the proposed Belmont Village assisted living community here in Thousand Oaks. The adjacent property owner to the property, my westerly property line shares the proposed project easterly property line. President of Ideal Homes and Development, I'm also a general building contractor. I'm a licensed general engineering contractor, and I hold a current license in real estate broker. I have a degree in mechanical engineering. The goal of this presentation is to try to get staff to agree to a design as less abrasive with respect to my privacy at my home, health, and to the City of Thousand Oaks residents. My property is a remaining 16-acre portion of the historical Nicholas Olson family ranch. Purchased this property for its privacy and views, as well to continue the Olsons' tradition of grand ranch-style living. The nearest neighbors are 100 yards away, and the property has views of the Canal Valley. This is an aerial view of the proposed site and my property. You can see the west direction, north direction, south and east directions for my property. My home is located near the center of the property that's partially outlined in red. The proposed project is at the site below my home that is outlined in black. The entire east side elevation of proposed project faces my property and home. My family room, two bedrooms, and view shed are toward the proposed project site. This is a picture of the proposed project site from my front yard area. Without the proposed building built there yet, this is how it looks now. The current design is a massive three-story building with the third-story occupant windows, building roofline, rooftop, and roof turret visible from my property and home. The third-story occupants would clearly be able to see my property and home as well. This is more, more of an accurate representation of what a cross-section would actually look like upon the completed proposed project. However, if the project was a two-story building, the second-story occupant windows and roofline would not be visible from my home, thus retaining my home's privacy and occupants' privacy as well. A list of concerns associated with the current project design is the building height, building size, the site distance just mentioned. The 14-foot roof turret extends above the roofline. It has absolutely no function. It's, it's just a visual. The terrace and outside dining area that's to the rear of the building that faces my property, and heating, ventilating, ventilation, and air conditioning units that are used to heat and cool the occupants' rooms are somewhat exterior units, and later, in Gloria's representation, she'll go into more detail on that. Also, I'm concerned about healthy and unwelcome sewer vent odors from the project because my property is slightly elevated, and behind this, the prevailing breezes come from this side of the project onto my property. Also concerned about the kitchen orders and kitchen noises that's on the rear side of the proposed building. There's concerns about the interior and exterior lighting, landscaping, and dirt export and relocation, and traffic for employees and the occupants that do drive. In past correspondence with senior planner Lori Young regarding SUP 2001-1042, Lori assured me that she and City of Thousand Oaks Planning Department or staff would not support a three-story building in this location. This was discovered when I was in escrow on, on this ranch property, and I was doing my due diligence. I did everything I can to find out what would be approved below me there someday and what may not, and how it would affect my property.
Mr. Severance, your time is up. Can you please conclude for us?
Thank you. Please do not support the proposed project as designed. This is too massive of a project and will negatively impact the neighborhood and the City of Thousand Oaks residents. Project will set a precedence for future, future unwelcome projects. Being a developed business myself and understanding this project from intuitive level, I'm hopeful and confident that staff and Belmont Village personnel can design a less abrasive project with respect to my privacy, my home, and the health of my property, and to the City of Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the speaker? Mr. Adams?
Evening, Mr. Severance. I'm intrigued by this suggestion that you had about the export of the dirt. How would that help you with your privacy concerns?
Good question. To the developer, in their presentation, there was a, some mention of the soil from staff. How would benefit my property would be that we would build to extend the front slope, ridge that's in front of my house, that helps interfere with the line of sight from my residents to generate some privacy from, privacy from my home. So, by importing the dirt to that area, bringing that slope to the west, my property line is still quite a ways below, down the slope. There's room to do this. It would help increase privacy from the home. I think it would look better from Belmont Village perspective also. It'd be more of a finished slope that could be landscaped. Secondly, there was a question about the export of soil. I'm quite confident, in addition to this area, there's two other areas where I could absorb the soil to benefit my property without one truck traveling on city streets. All the trucks being loaded with the export dirt can travel through my ranch to the various areas where the dirt can be exported to, so there, there won't be any traffic issues whatsoever with the exported dirt. I understand that it takes an approval from the planning department to do this, and it takes a grading plan, and there's, there's some fees associated with that. I think Belmont Village has expressed some interest in looking into this further. Other than that, the proposed project doesn't do, doesn't help my property value or enhance my property whatsoever. Thank you. Anything else?
I think Mr. Rinkie said something about, and you can correct me for a moment, 50 cubic yards of dirt or more, there'd be a permit and a fee required. Was that the, because my question would be, would you be, you know, willing to get this permit and pay this fee?
Well, it's, any import of 50 cubic yards or more requires a grading permit, and then, and then, in order to get a grading permit, we would want there to be some type of entitlement that's usually associated with the construction of a structure, a house, or something like that. We don't just issue grading permits to export a lot of dirt onto a property without there being an actual structure plan.
So, this would be not within that qualification then because there's no structure being planned?
That's correct.
I see.
Mr. Adams, you have further questions?
No, I don't. Oh, no, I have a couple for the applicant.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Severance.
Thank you.
Gloria Severance, followed by Mr. Shabel, followed by Mr. Sellers. Good evening, ma'am. You have five minutes. The orange light tells you when you have a minute left.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am adding to what my husband has said.
Excuse me one moment, please. Could you state your name and your city of residence for the record?
My name is Gloria Castro-Severance, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I am here to point out some of the issues that I know all of you have already a report from my husband regarding these issues, but the public view do not have a report, so I want to point out some of them. The building height, the total height of the proposed project is very tall for this particular neighborhood setting. The building size is too massive for this particular neighborhood. Please take a close look at- Please take a close look at the massive building size of the east elevation of proposed building. The roof turret, it's one of my big concerns also. It's, in addition to the height issues, the current design has a turret approximately 14 inches tall that extends well above the third-story roofline, adding additional building structure with our home and property view shed. It is asked of the staff to delete the turret feature from the building. It absolutely has no purpose other than that it looks nice. The terrace outside the dining area, the proposed project has an outdoor terrace which faces our property. This area will be used for dining, congregating of several people, the residents, or family members, staff, and these types of areas will attract a lot of cigarette smokers. I mean, we have seen even Castle Hill people that do still smoke in those areas. The prevailing breezes, cigarette smoke, odors, noises will drift into our property, generating unwelcome odors and possibly health issues. This would be a very difficult area to police for Belmont Village. One of the points that Ms. Reynolds made out earlier, and I am very familiar with Castle Hill, and we did have somebody wander into our property, and I cannot reveal that person's name, but he fell into our property, hurt his knees, and we ended up befriending this gentleman that had dementia, and we had no idea that he just wanders off, and we became friends, and we allowed him to come all the time because he loved to come and sit on our bench. But it is true, they still, some of them are not handicapped. They can walk, and this person, if I'm asked, I will reveal his name at Castle Hill, he did walk to our property, all the way up that hill, and so that is another big concern. There is impossible for them to police everybody that will be smoking, making noise, being loud, coming up to our property. Heating, ventilating, and air conditioning of the proposed project has approximately 75 occupant dwelling units on the east side of the building facing our residents. Each occupant unit will have HVAC unit. These type of units emit exterior noise that will be able to be heard from our residents, especially in the evening. The third-story level amplifies this problem. One very important thing that also, I mean, everything sounds nice and pretty and very good for the community. However, the proposed project, there is a lot of other type of senior living locations in Thousand Oaks. There are several of them, and they are not of full capacity, including Castle Hill. So this adds to another senior living place that is really not necessary. Maybe this could be, this location could be used for something of more needed use for the community instead of one more assisted living senior living location. There is another big concern for me. If this project is accepted, if you allow it, the curb on Moore Park, it's there, it has a blind spot, and although Mr. Lasseter said that there will be nobody driving because they don't generate traffic because they don't drive anymore, there will be a lot of people coming through that intersection, family, a lot of trucks, delivery trucks, employees, staff, visitors of all kinds. There will be a lot of traffic. There is a blind spot in that curb, and it's very dangerous. So that is my concerns. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you. Mr. Schabel? Good evening, sir. You have five minutes. Please state your name and your city of residence for the record.
Thank you. My name is Frank Schabel, Thousand Oaks, California. My home of 34 years backs up to Moore Park Road directly across from this development. I live in the Greenridge tract. As I stated in a letter to your planning staff, we are not opposed to the concept of this assisted living facility. Our primary concern is the details of the safety measures on this really dangerous stretch of road, and also the increased traffic noise level in our home. I'd like to thank the city staff who've been very helpful by meeting with me on three occasions to explain this project, but I have spoken to four of my neighbors whose properties are also across the street from this project, and I think I can more or less speak for all of them, and we all have very serious safety concerns about this really, really accident-prone curve on Moore Park Road. We're all tired of screeching tires, crashing vehicles, repairing our block walls, and calling 911 at all hours of the day or night. I can't tell you how many accidents have been there in the 34 years that I've been here, but I'm sure it's at least 50, maybe more. On some years, I've had three or four vehicles crash into my block wall in one year. I basically feel that it's absolutely necessary to have a steel guardrail on the west side of Moore Park Road to protect the block walls and the personal safety of all the residents in these homes at this location. I've requested a guardrail from your staff extending from Greenridge Street southward to the LDS Church driveway, and because the proposed widening of Moore Park Road, which will all be on the west side of the road, increases the hazard to our properties by making the road closer to our block wall, and if cars do go off the road, they're going off much closer to our block wall than they would be at the present time. In this regard, your traffic engineer, city planner, and civil engineer have all informed me that the developer is being conditioned to conduct a design study to determine the need for a guardrail. This will be done using state or Caltrans standards. I think that was mentioned previously. This is all well and good, but we, the residents, still have no guaranteed assurance that this study will result in any guardrail, or one that's long enough to provide safety for the homeowners. All they're conditioned to do is do the study. Who knows what the result of that will be? Can your commission mandate a guardrail, even if it means subsidizing a portion of the cost? I believe you're already subsidizing, I was told, a portion of the sidewalk that's on the south side of the property. And in another area, a safety concern of mine is the left turn pocket striping in the middle of Moore Park Road. This is for northbound cars turning left into Greenridge Street. Because there's a very limited line of sight, this is a real hazard. Many of the residents don't even want to make a left turn there. The dirt embankment on the east side of the road can be cut back, and this will be improved, and I need assurance from you that this will actually be accomplished. And I've also been assured by your staff that if, after this project is completed, the noise levels, if the noise levels in my yard are too high, I can apply to the city to increase my block wall height to nine feet. I get the impression tonight that's correct. However, I believe I will have to pay for a sound study to measure the decibel level, and I think that's quite expensive, and I hope I don't have to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Now we'll go to our city attorney for her comment. Ms. Albano?
Thank you. Mr. Sellers is the next speaker, and I want to clarify some issues before he comes up so that you can use your time and put in a card to speak. I just saw your look as...
I've spoken already as part of the applicant.
Okay. Well, you have five more minutes, so if you want to speak to what I'm going to discuss, we're giving you that opportunity. Thank you, members of the commission and members of the public. This is a new ordinance. I want to be clear, and we're talking about the linkage fee ordinance that the council adopted, as Mr. Town explained earlier. Under the linkage fee ordinance, the city council adopted by a resolution standards of uses for non-residential categories, and if there was a land use that wasn't designated, then they gave the authority to the community development director. And when the fee was learned, what the fee was, we did receive correspondence from Mr. Sellers, and then on November 26, Mr. Prescott responded, and the issues that came up at that time were whether it was correctly, whether we were correct or Mr. Prescott was correct in designating this project as lodging. And he believed, after going through information that was submitted by the applicants, that lodging was the correct use and that residential was not the correct use, and so he designated lodging. That is what we believe is actually, would be something that should go to the council for appeal if there's an issue. Separate from that, the code section that Mr. Sellers quoted has to do with general waiver provisions of any of the provisions of the new housing ordinance that this linkage fee was part of, and it specifically states that the applicant has to, if they're asking for an adjustment or a waiver, then they have to come in showing that it would effectuate, meaning the having applied this fee is an unconstitutional taking of property or an unconstitutional application to the property. It also goes on to say that any request for a waiver, adjustment, or reduction would be submitted concurrently with inclusionary housing, or in this case, with the application for non-residential development, and that the applicant bears the burden of presenting substantial evidence on that question. At the time of their application, this fee was not in place yet. It came into place yesterday, yet after that, as Mr. Sellers explained, as well as, I think, Mr. Town. We sent a letter to the applicant, and even when Mr. Prescott sent his response in November 2008, he stated that he directed their attention to the waiver provision and suggested that if they chose to, they could bring forward and process that issue as part of this development entitlement. So technically, because this condition that they've asked for a change says that we waive the fee, so technically, that is within the planning commission's purview. But the problem you have is there has been absolutely nothing submitted as part of this entitlement or after, after this letter, that shows, sets out the information that would be needed, why this would be an unconstitutional taking or unconstitutionally applied to this property. And therefore, at this point, you have nothing in the record to support a waiver under. So, Mr. Sellers, you do have five minutes left. If you believe that you have that evidence, you have the right to bring that tonight, and I don't want to have the record not cleaned. So I really think there's two separate issues going on. One is a waiver. One is the issue of whether you believe or not that the lodging was correct, and we stand by, we really believe that's something for the council to decide. There is a lot of evidence that we had, that we looked at, and reasons that Mr. Prescott made the finding he did. But on the issue of waiver, we, at least I don't believe, and if I'm mistaken, I'd appreciate knowing that, that we haven't received something as part of this process that staff has responded to as part of even the, in the staff report on this issue of the waiver.
Thank you, Ms. Albano. Mr. Sellers, you have five minutes. Please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Mark Sellers with Jackson Demarco Law Firm, City of Thousand Oaks. I'm still less than clear on whether we need a waiver here, whether this is something within your jurisdiction, or whether this is a fee reduction issue. If it's a waiver, we feel that this fee was suddenly placed upon us after we met with staff, talked with staff, was never warned about the particular fee, and to me, that's sort of justification for a lack of due process notice to, here, we've done all the diligence, we've asked about all the fees, and then suddenly we close, in essence, go hard on the deal, and the day after the application is deemed complete, we get a letter from the city that you have this particular fee. At the time, we had no idea what the fee. The fee could have been up to $500,000 to $250,000 to zero. The letter we got was that we are in this nebulous other category, and you need to meet with us and explain your project and determine whether that fee should be in the lodging, retail, industrial, or some of the other categories. We met with, sent a letter in, met with staff. We feel that this project is more of a residential character than it is a lodging character, that the tendencies in this facility are a rental arrangement, like an apartment arrangement. They're under leases, that when you go to a hotel, it's a license agreement. It's a lot less in stature than a lease. The people that are in this facility will probably designate Thousand Oaks their primary residence. You don't find that in a hotel or other lodging arrangements. We feel that these facilities have kitchens, kitchenettes. They are designed, again, for long-term stay rather than a short-term stay, and when you look at the picture of what is, they're for seniors. When you look at the code section that defines what a senior project is, it talks about a project that is for seniors, and it basically says it's any residential accommodation other than a mobile home. So we looked at what we're bringing to this site, and to us, it's more of a residential project than it is a retail, hotel, motel, or whatever, and that's basically our argument. So I'm still less than confused in whether you have jurisdiction or you don't have jurisdiction to decide this issue.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Mr. DiBiase? Dennis?
I'm with the Argent's Office, and I'm available for...
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Bombardier?
I'm with the...
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Jeffrey Marsh?
I'm with the...
Okay. Stephen Brolier, next speaker?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, process to the...
All with the crew, the applicant's crew, okay?
Oh, you're about, he's...
Okay.
He's creating a time for...
Not yet. Some may wish that we were, but not yet, sir. Okay, so that'll do it for the speaker cards. The last speaker card we have is Mr. Kidway. Good evening, sir. Welcome. You have five minutes. Please state your name and your city of residence for the record, please.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Iqbal Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, and last time I checked, still director, concerned citizen of Thousand Oaks, honorable and distinguished Chair, LUN, planning commissioners. I am concerned about this hearing and this project, the way it is being addressed by the planning commission, that despite being the last speaker, there's still so many loose ends that still exist. For the record, since I've been a director since 1993, I was here in 2001 when the other project that did not make it was discussed, and it was brought forth by an ex-boss of mine who owns, who owned a business in Newberry Park, and he has gone down to the valley in Camero. So I was glad to see that he owns a business, that he was moving into development and also a project that involves seniors, and it's been on my to-do list to inquire as to what happened, and the project never penciled out. And that's what is the issue, is that it's fine and dandy to come up with conditions to be for so-called slow growth or for better projects and all that, but if you end up destroying the goose that lays the golden egg, what good are you doing? And that's why I'm very concerned about, you call it a fee, but I call it a tax, this $256,000 that you all of a sudden sprung up on this poor business. I mean, sure, I mean... I mean, sure, I mean, they have a lot more money than I do and maybe some of you, but they're not going to be paying this outrageous amount. And it's coming out from the seniors that are going to be buying this. And as far as I'm concerned, even after Mr. Sellers spoke, that the issue has really not been crystally addressed, even now, as to whether you, they qualify for a waiver or whether they are getting for it. As far as I'm concerned, due process has not been followed, that when they had, the application was complete, there should not be any fees imposed at the last instance. I'm also very concerned, and I seek the help of TOTV. This is a letter from Lori Young, which has been mentioned. And despite the questioning from the planning commissioners, I'm disappointed that the key issues are still not being addressed by the planning commissioners. I am concerned as to, and so should you be, how can a senior planner write, and I quote, "Future consideration for increasing the project from two stories will not be supported or approved by staff." This is on the city letterhead, and I mean, does staff make these recommendations? I mean, right now, this is before the planning commissioners. I mean, staff people who write these kind of things should be reprimanded. I mean, at the most, this should have been written by the director of the community development department, not a senior planner. And while I disagree with some of the issues that have been raised by the neighbor, Mr. Severns, I can sympathize with him when he has built his property based on this letter. Once again, he has come up with 12 concerns. And I will just read from concern number five, that in addition to the occupants and various maintenance workers, conversations, voices will be heard from my residents dwelling at possibly all hours of the day. Many of these conditions, honorable planning commissioners, deny reasonable use of the property. I mean, I remember talking to Matt Schaefer about the project that's being built on Went to Park Road, which has come after the homes were built. I mean, this property was, is not open space. It is designed for institutional use. The only issue that may be contentious is whether there should be a third story or not. And instead of going all over the map, those issues of privacy and the height have not really been issued adequately, in my opinion. I hope that the planning commissioners will massage this project and approve it with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you. That concludes our speakers. Now we go back to staff for staff response.
There's a, let's see, a few issues I'd like to address. In regard to the road edge on the west side of the road, actually, for this project, we were able to increase the distance away from the walls by an extra five feet to 15 feet. The prior project that was approved had a, the paved, street pavement 10 feet from the wall. So we increased it by 50%. In regards to the type of air conditioning, heating units, they're proposing use a similar unit that's, that's, was installed at the two Marriott hotels over in Newberry Park. And staff hasn't received any complaints from those residents. We also have this type of unit on a, another senior living facility off a Hoden Camp Road. And in regards to the sewer vents, all buildings have those on top of their roofs. That's not uncommon. That's the only way that the plumbing works. Did you have any comments?
Ms. Baden.
I'd like to make a couple of comments, and then if I could ask Mr. Marsh, who's the project civil engineer, to come up and speak some more about the road and also the guardrail design. When I'm done with my comments, I'd appreciate that. First of all, Moor Park Road was way back when, State Route 23, and this portion was intended to be a transition between the four-lane section of Moor Park that's south of Olson Road and the transition down to the Norwegian grade. So we're looking at a fairly complicated section as far as making that transition and providing good and safe access to each of the uses that front this portion of the Guardrail design has to look at the safety of the motoring public as well as the safety of the properties that are adjacent to the street. And it has to be designed carefully so that you're not introducing another hazard for the motoring public. So the design is quite important. One of the neighbors had asked about the site distance for the left-turn pocket going northbound on Moor Park at Greenridge, and just wanted to note that this particular design allows us to increase that site distance by about 100 feet, which is considerable. And basically, the project is giving us an opportunity to improve this section of Moor Park Road and to add bike lanes, sidewalks, and also to improve the safety aspects of some of the components of the road design. So with that, I'd like to conclude my comments and ask if Mr. Marsh could come up.
Mr. Marsh, please state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
It's like Village. Beth has touched on a very important aspect of this, and that is the safety of Moor Park Road. As Mr. Schreiber put, there's been a number of incidents on this road. And I've worked very closely with Beth and city staff to establish a much safer horizontal and vertical design for this project, but specifically Moor Park Road. She's really touched on all the sightline issues. We've addressed that at length. We filled with the striping plan that we're adequately addressing left-turn pockets into Greenridge Road as well as into the project itself. And there's a very limited traffic being generated by this project. So we're taking an existing condition right now that is, could be considered a pretty unsafe condition and greatly improving it and at expense to the developer themselves.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Adam.
Good evening, sir. There is a guardrail there now.
Yes.
And it's, it's old, it looks like it's deteriorated, and, but yeah, it's very, it's definite there's another guardrail going in, right? But we, you're saying, and Ms. Baden is saying, we just don't know the extent of the guardrail?
There's certain guidelines, you've heard this a number of times, there's certain guidelines that have to be followed. And what has to be carefully looked at is that you're not actually adding a hazard to drivers there. In some cases, adding a guardrail could possibly do that. In this case, we're making the road much safer than it is in existing condition. The accidents and the issues at the, this particular area, we've studied the existing conditions, and the road itself is at a substandard design, which could be leading to these accidents. We feel that the new proposed improvements to Moor Park Road, which are pretty significant, will greatly improve that situation. The staff has asked us to look at an engineering study to determine if a guardrail is appropriate for this application, and the applicant is more than happy to do that.
I appreciate what you're saying, and I'm sure that once the road's redesigned, it'll be safer. But there's a guardrail there now.
Mm-hmm.
Are you saying that conceivably, if the study turns, goes one way or another, there could be no guardrail at all?
That is a possibility. And it's existing condition, in my opinion, a guardrail is absolutely necessary in that area.
Oh, okay.
In its existing condition.
In its existing condition?
Yeah, the improvements themselves are going to change the geometry of the road and will allow the traffic to flow a lot more freely on Moor Park Road.
Well, the, all right, well, since we're talking about opinions, then in your, in the improved condition, what's your opinion as to the use of a guardrail?
Well, I guess I opened that door, didn't I?
Yes. Yes, you did.
I honestly have not studied that closely. My concern is to not put the City of Thousand Oaks in jeopardy. They need to look at this with me as well to make sure that a guardrail is appropriate for this, for this design.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Baden.
If I could add something else, when you are looking at guardrail design, one of the criteria that you look at for the safety of the motoring public is whether there's a recovery area on the shoulder of the road. And right now, we actually have a fairly substantial recovery area, and because of the unused width on the west edge of the road that exists in the public right-of-way before you get to the houses. With the proposed design, we're adding some super elevation to the roads, or we're basically proposing to raise the west side of the road. And at that point, we're just going to have a drop-off at the edge of the pavement. So it's fairly likely that we'll need guardrail along the full length of the super-elevated section to keep the traffic from going off the edge of the pavement. But there are other facets to the design that have to be looked at carefully to make sure that we've got adequate end treatments so that when people are driving, if they do go off the road and they do strike the guardrail, that they're not going to be more seriously hurt than if the guardrail wasn't there. So there's a lot of design issues that need to be looked at. But it's pretty likely that this whole section would have some type of guardrail.
Okay. So I hear, okay, so I hear you saying it's likely it would have the guardrail, but you reserve your final judgment until the study is done.
I guess if I could show you exactly what it would look like, that would probably give a better level of comfort. But at this point, it hasn't been designed, so I don't have that opportunity.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to address Mr. Schreiber's concern, and I appreciate the answer. I have one other que...
Just hold one moment on that. Beth, do you need Mr. Marsh for anything further?
Only if there are other questions.
Do you have a question?
Wouldn't pertain to be.
Okay. I want to go to Ms. Albano now.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, we've gone back and forth, so I'm going to apologize to everyone again. Always helps when I read the entire ordinance at once instead of bits and pieces as we're sitting here. So I do apologize. There's a couple of things. The ordinance itself is very clear. Section 9-10.604 is the waiver requirements. And so the first question we have to answer is, does this body even have the ability to answer it? When I started tonight, I said, "You didn't." I should have stuck with my first answer. Because if you go, and then I was, in some ways, responding to what was said by the applicants. But if you look at this section, subsection C actually says that the request for a waiver, adjustment, or reduction shall be processed, reviewed, and approved or denied by the city council, and may be processed concurrently with discretionary applications. So originally, what Mark Town and I had talked about was right, and so I am so sorry for the drill here. And I also want to be very clear that there is also no evidence in front of you tonight as to that there was anything unconstitutional by what we did. And I feel compelled to speak to this issue because we had another speaker get up and say somehow due process was denied. Under the law, the city council has the authority to impose a fee and to impose new conditions on any application and on any project unless it has become vested. That was an issue that was actually in front of the council. The staff's recommendation was that we would go ahead and apply this new fee even to applications that were pending if the project had not been vested. And that is what the council, in adopting the ordinance, chose to do. That was where staff came out and where the recommendations were for. So there is nothing illegal about doing that. In terms of public notice, there were my rids of workshops leading up to adoption of that ordinance. There was public hearings, and there was public hearings at the city council on all of these issues. So this was not done under the cover of darkness. Now, I do appreciate the fact that the applicants had been in discussion with the city on their project, and we did not, no one said, "Oh, by the way, this new fee is pending." That is absolutely true. But once the fee went into effect, we did give notice to all the pending applicants that the fee was there. And so I just want to make it really clear that there is nothing on the record that was brought forward, nor did the city do anything inappropriate, illegal, or unconstitutional as it comes to this fee, and that the appropriate place to ask for a waiver is at the city council. And that if that's what the, depending what happens tonight, if the applicant chooses to bring that forward to the city council, then we will go ahead and schedule that. So that's it in terms of the fee.
Thank you, Ms. Albano. Let's go back to staff to follow up. Any other comments, Mr. Renkey?
No other comments.
Any questions of staff now?
If I may, just a quick question about raising the wall. If I, you know, the planning commission recommended the city council, and city council passed the ordinance that allow residents to raise their wall up to nine feet. And the main provision was that they no longer had to go through this relatively expensive permit process to do so, if my recollection serves me. So am I correct in saying then that Mr. Schreiber wants to raise his wall? Yes, it would have to be inspected, I believe, so that it fits with the city ordinance as far as aesthetics, but there'd be no fee charged to him? Is that, do you happen to know if that's correct? No permitting fee he'd have to pay?
Mr. Town.
Perhaps I can respond to that. Mr. Schreiber was correct in that a noise study is required to document the need for the increase in wall height to avoid a proliferation of wall height increases where they're not warranted. So he was correct on that point. With that in hand, then, we would consider that application.
So he would have to pay for a noise, noise study then? But there's no permit fee then, beyond that, correct?
There is a noise study, there would be the, and that would obviously cost Mr. Schreiber or anybody else something. And then also the permit application fee to increase the wall height. Because you would need a building permit for the actual wall.
Hmm, okay. Well, I thought we waived something there, fee-wise, but...
What, what I believe you're referring to, Commissioner Adam, is that the requirement for a minor modification to the tract was waived, and that's where the cost savings came in. These other fees, in fact, were, are less, and in the case of the building permit, are always a part of the process.
All right. Thanks for the clarification.
Any further questions of staff? Okay, we'll go back to the applicant for rebuttal, Mr. LaSart. Good evening, sir. You have five minutes. Please state your name once again for the record and your city of residence, please.
My city of residence is Santa Clara, California. I'm actually going to call upon my coworker here, Stephen Broyer, to handle the rebuttal.
Thank you, sir. Would you please state your name and city of residence for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Stephen Broyer. I'm with Belmont Village, senior development manager for the company, based in Houston, Texas. My role in this project is overseeing the design, coordination with construction, and ultimately, hopefully, turning it over to our operations department, our operations division. I wanted to speak to two or three items, well, actually, six or seven items that I noted were raised as concerns for our project. The first, which seems to be most important, is the line of sight issue. The drawing that we have included in the packet was based on design work done by our civil engineer and our architect. We feel very confident that it's accurate, it's to... We feel very confident that it's accurate, it's to scale, it is an accurate representation of, you know, both views from the property to the east and from our property, I guess, back west. Concerns leading to residents being able to view back to the west, Mr. Severn's property, I would say that due to the distance from our building to his property, the ridgeline being above our level of, our residence level, shades, the age of our residents, it's probably not going to be a, an issue from our residence back towards him. As far as the view from, from his property, if you go to the, if you go to the ridgeline and look straight down, you will see our building. There's no question about it. But if you have a more view towards the horizon, our building is below the ridgeline and should not be seen. There's no question about it. The turret does project up higher, and, you know, as you get closer to the ridgeline, you will be able to see the turret. Second item has to do with the HVAC system. These are what we refer to as a PTAC system. And a PTAC system is basically an in-wall HVAC system. And it's actually within the building. It's not projected outside of the building. The mechanics of the PTAC unit all operate inside the building. Amana, who is the supplier of the PTAC unit, is probably the, I guess, top of the line as far as the quietness of the unit, since the mechanics are inside the building. You know, it's very important that it's very quiet. You know, with the units, the units are integral to the window system. So again, everything's inside the building, and the noise is minimal, if at all. We've never had a complaint. We have, just about every property in the city and, out here in Los Angeles, is very close to property lines, and we've never had a concern or a comment. One other thing that's important to know is that PTAC, or the Amana Company, has done a survey or a study on the usage of these units. And they've determined that in the, is this me? They've determined that the, that the use of the units is very minimal in the, in this climate out here. So when we have, you know, seventy-seven units on that side of the building, I would say the operation of those units will be minimal. Even during operation, you should not have a noise issue. Two other items real quick I'd like to address. The terrace, we actually had two terraces on the east side of the building. We've reduced it to one. It's now twelve hundred square feet. Our residents, it's not a smoking area. It is not a party area. Our residents could possibly have a meal out there. Twelve hundred square feet, you probably have a total of maybe four tables, maybe sixteen people if everyone is eating all at the same time, which doesn't happen in our projects. But I don't see that to be a problem. The, as far as noises and odors from the kitchen, our mechanical system is, or our exhaust system is located on a flat roof that is just above the first floor, so it is below the ridgeline, well below the ridgeline. And the fumes, due to the type of cooking, most of our cooking that we use at our facility is healthy, and so there's not a lot of fried foods, not a lot of continuous grilling, frying, that sort of thing.
Mr. Broyer, can you wrap up your time's experience?
All right, one last item I'd like to address. As far as our dementia area and a concern of elopement from the dementia area, all of our exterior doors are connected to, they're on an alarm system and connected to an emergency call system. So if any time, at any time of the day, the door is basically touched, it'll notify our pals, which are our personal assistant liaisons, who actually are on the floor and monitoring the activity in the dementia area twenty-four hours a day. In addition to that, if someone should go outside to the dementia courtyard area, they're always with staff and never left alone. We have an excellent record of elopements, and any potential elopements have been aborted at, you know, right before it's been an issue.
Thank you, sir. Questions of the speaker or the applicant? Commissioner Adam.
Evening, sir. Thank you for your direct answers to some of these concerns that came up. On these HVAC units, then, they're not going to be hanging off the side of the building. In other words, they'll be internal, inside the room?
Right.
Okay. Well, that cleared that up for me.
Yeah, it's, it's an, the, the window system has an integral louver, so it's all one component. And so the unit is actually behind the louver. So when you see the face of the building, you're going to see a window, and you'll see, you know, basically a louver. You'll see the facade of the building. You will not see a unit.
All right. And the, the business of tenting the windows, how do you feel about that?
Well, we don't do that. We've never done that. We've never had a request to do that. You know, I just don't see the need because of the, I guess, the need or the request is so someone is not looking out. I think the proximity of our building to Mr. Severn's property is far enough away that it would be sort of a useless cost, actually.
All right. And the tower? What's the feasibility of lowering it or eliminating it?
Well, the tower is intended, as mentioned earlier, as more of an aesthetic thing. Belmont Village, if you see most of our properties, we have sort of a signature cupola or tower of some sort. So it's, it's been in the family for a long time. Some properties do not have a tower. I will, you know, you probably saw the slide earlier. But we like to do it, especially when you have, you know, a building such as ours, towers and architects can speak to this, towers and elements in ends and outs of building really make, will really break up various aspects of a building. And it's an architectural thing. Would we be willing to remove it? I think I'd have to huddle with my partner over here, and we would consider it.
All right. And one other question that hasn't come up this evening, but I do want to ask it. This is a big building. It's one hundred and five thousand square feet. How about any green building techniques that you'll implement? I mean, solar, water, you know, to make it a self-sustaining building? Are you going to go for any kind of LEED certification or?
You know, we've researched that quite a bit lately, obviously. It's, it's what we see in the, in the news a bunch. And what we found out, frankly, is that our buildings typically come very close to the LEED certification. Although, we haven't taken it to the step to actually achieve the certification. And interestingly, the PTAC unit is the basis for the LEED certification for the mechanical systems. They're one of the most efficient, well, they are. They're the standard for the efficiency from that. And so if you have a PTAC unit, you, you get four points in the LEED certification, you know? And if you don't have a PTAC, then you get two, you know? So it goes from there. But, but our, most of our systems, I would say, are within that classification or, you know, would be considered LEED-approved or would give us some certification. The trick is the paperwork and the documentation and all of those things that require you to actually be certified. We think we're either very close or are certified. We just don't have the documentation.
All right. Thank you. Well, I'm glad you thought about it and you're aware of it. You know, it's, it's important.
Yeah. All of the, all of the building materials and things that we design into the building are, are, you know, taken into consideration when we do that.
All right.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. There were no statement cards for this particular case, and we'll go now to the commission's comments and/or a motion. Discussion? Commissioner Fisher.
I'll certainly start the discussion on this. I think overall, it's a, it's a pretty good, pretty good project, the way it's designed. I think it certainly improves this area, and, you know, it's not new to the area. We've got Castle Hill right down the block there, which is also a three-story building. Road improvements, that's huge. Certainly, back in my paramedic days, I have been on several incidents there on that street, and this will do nothing but improve the safety. I think there's a pretty good shot that there will be a, some sort of barrier there. Just, it makes a lot of sense, but I guess we'll see how that pencils out. With regard to the linkage fee, I don't think we have enough information one way or another to even discuss that. So that's probably best handled at the city council level if it does go that direction. The building is below the ridgeline. You know, certainly with the air conditioning units that they're talking about, it's not obtrusive. There are not big units on the roof. So I think overall, everything looks pretty good. I don't know that I'm a huge fan of a fifty-six-foot bell tower, but, you know, I'm also not an architect. I don't like the look of it, but, you know, that's one person's opinion. So those are my discussion points.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. I really agree with everything that Commissioner Fisher said. I think that a facility like this is great. I worked in several of them in another lifetime, and I was very pleased to hear how they talked about the dementia and how it will be controlled and watched over, because I do know that a lot of times, people will walk out. I'm not a real big fan of the architectural, the tower, but I think that this is, as they said, one of their known things and, and something that they like to put on the buildings. I don't, I'm just only concerned if it's something that will stand out so much and be seen so much from the neighbor up above, that that's the one focal thing that they will really see. And maybe because of the color of the top of it. We haven't discussed that at all. But I think in overall, it is a very, and I'm looking at the east elevation, as I sat here all night looking at the east and what this neighbor's going to see. And it is a massive building, and there are just windows all over the whole side of it. But I think that is appropriate for the side in the way that the one area's been lowered ten feet. And with that, I'm ready to make a motion. If that's all right. I will move approval, SUP 2008-70341, with the findings and conditions as presented tonight.
Would your motion include Commissioner Reynolds, the approval of the mitigated negative DEC 267?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes. Mitigated declaration number 267.
Okay. Any further comments to the motion? Commissioner Adam.
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about, you know, I can really emphasize with Mr. Severn's situation here. He did his due diligence before he bought the house. He looked at the situation, and he knew something was going to be built there, but he wanted to find out what. And, and he did produce a letter tonight that, to me, is, the wording is unclear and probably a little bit unfortunate, when it talks about future considerations for two or three-story buildings would not be supported. I could certainly see how you would interpret that. And I think we have to be very careful about how we write our letters in the future. It's a very, it's a clever design. Clever in the sense that, you know, it's two stories from the street, which is, I think, what the, what the staff wanted. And they took that southern side and dropped it down ten feet. So the side that's most exposed to your home has been dropped down an extra ten feet. You know, I, I don't think, you'll see the building, but I don't think it impairs your, your view, per se. And I, and I don't, I don't think it's going to be a privacy factor for you. I personally don't feel that way. Because I think your house is set back far enough that that's, that shouldn't come into play. As far as the turret goes, you know, it's a, it's a nice little feature, and I think the city encourages these kind of towers for articulation of the, of the, of the different buildings. Fortunately, it's on the north side, so it's not directly in front of your home. I wish we could lower the pad a little bit more, but it's already down to street level as it is. So I don't, on the southern side, that is. So I don't see how it can be lowered any, any further. And so, oh, and as far as that, as far as the fee, the inclusionary fee, I don't feel prepared to waive that tonight. And I think it's maybe more a question of re-characterization. I don't think we were, have that ability to re-characterize it either. So that sounds to me like, as, as council said, we'd have to go to the city council. So, and as far as the guardrail, although I didn't get a guarantee, it seems to me likely that there will be a guardrail there. And it seems to me very likely that it will extend past your home, according to an opinion from this gentleman and, and Ms. Baden. So, and I share your concerns about the safety of the road. I think the overall safety will increase though as they redesign it. So, you know, it, overall, putting aside Mr. Severn for just a moment, Mr. Scheibl, I think the, the building is, is well-designed and innovative in the sense that they have made it appear to be two stories from Moore Park Road, which is a scenic highway. So I'm going to support the motion, and, and I'm going to support the motion.
Any other comments? Thank you, Commissioner Adam. Commissioner Grimney.
Well, first off, I'd like to compliment city staff for a thorough and well-prepared report and MND. And then state that I concur with staff's finding for approval. And respectfully, I'd like to submit a couple of additional comments for the record. And that is, is that, you know, in looking at this project, I was taking into consideration our general plan, which was to meet the needs of our community. And it's my opinion that this project is consistent with the types of lifestyle opportunities that we would like to have for our residents and for their loved ones. And it's the whole concept and the idea that as we age and we grow, that there will be places and choices for us to make to be able to stay within our community. I'd also like to recognize the progressive design of this project, which I think incorporates some elements I hope to see in the future, which is this multi-level design that ends up looking more like a village instead of looking like an institutional building. And I think that's very important when we are placing these types of facilities so close to neighboring residential areas. And then probably just, you know, just let you know, boy, everybody has a different point of view. I really like the turret. And I think it's these types of architectural designs that really stand out and give a unique look as you're traveling throughout a community. So I'm very supportive of that. And then finally, I just want to make a statement that in granting this approval, it's not in opposition to the neighboring residents and their concerns, but rather in support of kind of the framework of what it is, is our responsibility to do, which is kind of supporting the zoning ordinance that, that is set up for us as planning commission. We don't make decisions on how a property is to be zoned, and we don't have the power to do that. And so that is something that's left for this, for the city council. And so with that, I'm in total support of this project.
Any further comments to the motion? Please vote. Please vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Thank you. There's a ten-day appeal period. Now we'll go to item number seven, Community Development Department reports and referrals. Mr. Town.
Thank you, Commissioner Carolyn. I just wanted to draw the commission's attention to page sixty-eight of your packet. It highlights upcoming cases. We have four different cases coming before you on March 23rd, as well as Hilltop Builders on April 13th, and then we have a number of different cases, really two different projects, though, on April 27th, one of which is the, the city modification, actually cleanup item regarding open space parcels citywide, as well as the Walsh case on Lakeview Canyon Road. Also wanted to just mention cases that you have considered that will be or have been considered by the city council. One is the housing element update on page seventy-one of your packet. That package of items, including the housing elements, as well as the related general plan amendments, specific plan amendments, and zone changes that you considered on January 12th was reviewed and approved by the city council on February 9th, and also the Home Depot case, which you considered and approved on January 26th, will be, has been appealed and will be heard by the city council at a special meeting on March 31st. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Motion for minutes of our February 9th Planning Commission meeting? Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. Move approval of the minutes of February 9th, 2009?
Please vote.
Motion passed, 4-0. Commissioner Grumney abstaining.
Thank you. AB 1234 reports, negative. Commission Commerce. Commissioner Grumney.
I would just like to acknowledge the wonderful victory of the Thousand Oaks High School basketball team in their recent game, and so congratulations, we are all so proud of them.
Thank you. Any other comments? I wanted to thank all city staff, thanks to, and welcome back to our city attorney, Ms. Amy Albano, and thanks for your clarification on, on the issues here tonight, to Mr. Town, and last but not least, to the police department. We thank you for being here, and we stand adjourned until 6:30 on March 23rd, 2009 in this chamber. Thank you.
Our community volunteers, who devote thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of service hours each year, their efforts support the organizations that bring numerous valuable services to our residents. Showcasing these accomplishments through a speech is always a struggle, therefore I selected, elected to highlight some of our most notable achievements through a video. Enjoy and reflect. Thousand Oaks is one of the most vibrant cities in the country, from our fifteen thousand acres of open space and seventy-five miles of trails, to our diverse and strong business community. With the frenetic pace of modern life, it's easy to overlook things that make life so truly special in Thousand Oaks. Things such as the three hundred and forty performances in 2008, from ballet groups to sold-out performances of Cabrillo, winner of six Ovation Awards, and visits from Bill Cosby, Thomas Friedman, and Charlie Rose. Our theaters have served almost a quarter of a million patrons this year. When I took over as mayor, I laid out a platform focusing on enhancement of our community's existing quality of life. Now, a